I'm Corey Blankenship. I'm a fire ecologist with the Nature Conservancy's landfire team and the facilitator for the biophysical settings review in Alaska. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here with us today to talk about boreal forests. I thought, you know, we do have a pretty large group, but I thought we could do a really quick round of introductions so that everybody knows each other. And we can start with the landfire team. And then what I thought I would do to make this quick and easy is I'll put a list of names in the chat and we'll just go in that order. And you can introduce yourself with your name, your title and your location. So we'll, we'll try to do the introduction, but keep it short. So Randy, do you want to go next and introduce yourself?
Hi, everyone. Randy Swaddy here. I am Corey's colleague based at our market Michigan. So I'm an ecologist on the nature conservancies landfire team.
Awesome. Thanks. Okay. I'm going to put this list in the chat. These were people who registered and I don't think everyone's here. So Lisa, you're first.
Hi, everybody. Lisa Sapirstein, I'm a regional fire ecologist with Fish and Wildlife Service located in Anchorage.
Eric?
Yeah, sorry, I can't see the chat. I'm using a phone here.
Okay, you're next.
Fire ecologist with the Bureau of Land Management, Alaska Fire Service.
Great. Thanks for being here. Let's see, I don't see, oh, you are here.
I'm here, yeah. I'm Melissa Boyd. I'm a research scientist at Northern Arizona University and I work in Michelle Max Lab. And my internet's not great, so I'm keeping my video off, but nice to be here.
Welcome.
Unsuccessfully pressing buttons. Lindsay Flagstad, I'm with the Alaska Center for Conservation Science and we're part of the University of Alaska in Anchorage. And I work here as a vegetation ecologist.
Nice to see you, Lindsay. I don't see Ken. Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Barnes. I'm the regional fire ecologist with the National Parks Service based in Fairbanks.
Thanks for being here, Jennifer. I don't see Chris on Sheree. And correct me if I've said that wrong.
Oh, that's right. Hi, hi, everyone. I'm Anushree Wadola and I'm a PhD student at University of Alaska, Fairbanks. And I'm working on remote sensing of wildfires.
Well, then you get the most beautiful background award so far. Steven, I don't see Steven today. Beth, Beth is here. Welcome, Beth.
Hi, I'm not going to turn on my video because it's horrible lighting and background. I'm retired from the forest service. I was the vegetation lead there for FIA. And recently Lindsay, well, Lindsay did the power push, but we finished up a project looking at the NBS and communities in Alaska, I mean, in the boreal forested communities anyway. So it's kind of gives us some new insight maybe on this.
Great. Thanks for joining us again, Beth. Graham, looks like some new folks have joined. I don't see Graham yet, though. Nadelle? And correct me if I said that wrong.
That's right.
Just doing introductions.
Hi, sorry. Are we doing introductions right now?
Yes, yes, sorry. I think you joined late. We're just doing a real quick round of introductions, name, title, location.
My turn?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Nadelle Flynn. I coordinate the ecological landscape classification program for Yukon government. And I feel like I'm probably more like a fly in the wall. I'm just interested in your process. Yeah, so I just got noticed yesterday. So I was just hoping it's okay that I just observed.
Absolutely. And thanks for jumping in feet first. Sorry to put you on the spot when you just joined, but welcome. Thanks for being here. Let's see, I don't see Thomas, but I see some folks that weren't on my list. Blaine, hi, Blaine. Do you want to do a quick intro?
Sure. Hey, everybody. I'm Blaine Spellman. I work for the Natural Resources Conservation Service. I'm an ecologist up in Fairbanks.
For being here. And Matt McKender, can you do a quick intro, please?
Hi, yeah, I'm Matt McKender. I'm a geographer at Alaska or ABR Environmental Research and Services in Fairbanks, Alaska, and have been working on a lot of large area mapping projects for Alaska and adjacent Canada, partly with NASA, partly with resource management agencies.
Nice. Thank you, Matt. Is anyone? I think that's it. Okay. Oh, Megan joined us. Hi, Megan. Well, again, thank you for being here. Our goals today are to answer any questions you have about the biophysical settings review. I want to demonstrate quickly what the review process is and then hopefully spend the bulk of our time discussing some big picture questions for boreal forests and their succession and disturbance dynamics. So I will start with a short introductory PowerPoint presentation to give people an idea of where we're at in the process and what biophysical settings are and how they fit into landfires overall program. And, and then we'll get more into the discussion. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. And bring up the PowerPoint. Okay, so many of you, I'm sure, perhaps all of you have heard of landfire. And you're probably aware that earlier this year, or sorry, I guess it was late last year in August, we released a new set of landfire spatial data for the state. And that included disturbance and veg layers as well as fuels and topography. So that work has been done. And now we're on to this second phase where we're looking at the biophysical settings model review. That process is taking place now through the end of February. And that's where we're asking for expert input to help us build and refine and improve our model set. The landfire models are unique and distinct from the spatial data in that they're a product that we can't build ourselves. We can't build a team with the expertise to model vegetation dynamics for every ecosystem across the country. So the way we get this work done is by coming out to folks in the field and asking for your help. It's kind of like the NPR model. Right now, my local radio station is asking for contributions. And this is kind of the same thing. We're, we're coming to you and asking for your help because you're on the ground and you have the ecological expertise to help us understand these ecosystems and to model them. So the next phase after we go through this review is then we'll take all the input we receive, do our very best to update the models, and then we'll have them available in the summer of 2022 for folks who are interested. Then we will update the related spatial data. And that related spatial data includes a map of biophysical settings, another map called succession classes, where we actually map the serial states of each biophysical setting and then the fire regime information. And I don't have a release date yet on those products. So if you're not familiar with this idea of biophysical settings, what it is, is a potential vegetation concept. And it represents the vegetation that we think was dominant on the landscape prior to European colonization. And it includes both the biophysical environment and our best approximation of the historical disturbance regime. A biophysical setting model, it actually includes two things. The first part is the description document. And this is a screen cap of part of a description document for a Sitka spruce beach ridge community in Southeast Alaska. So the description document tells you, you know, what's the geographic range of the type? What are some of the dominant species? It describes the disturbance regime. And it gives a lot of additional information about the model, which I'll describe next, and any assumptions that go into that and what data support that model. So this is the description document. And this is actually the primary thing that we're asking people to review. So you don't need any modeling expertise or any special software to participate in the review. All we're asking is for people to review a Word document and give us feedback. And this is what a biophysical settings model looks like. And again, you don't have to be familiar with the modeling, but I present it here so you kind of have the concept in mind because I think it helps review, people to review the description document. So this is a beach ridge community in Southeast Alaska. And to build this model, we built on Michael Shepherd's work. In fact, Michael Shepherd helped build the model. And he did some work where he defined states for beach ridge communities. And he defined an early ecotone, a young forest, a middle aged and an old forest. So we translated that into our landfire classes. So early ecotone becomes what we call early one closed. Young forest became mid one all. And so these are distinct states or sterile, sterile stages within the beach ridge community. Each state then gets an age range assigned to it. The green arrows here represent successional or growth transitions. And I've got to move, I got this bar in the way. There we go. And the blue arrows represent disturbance transitions, for example, wind. And what's not shown here is that each pathway has a probability associated with it. So these are quantitative models. And what we do is we run the model out for a thousand time steps to estimate on average, how much of the landscape would be in each of the states and how often these disturbances are occurring. As I said, we also then map the biophysical settings so you can tie a model and a description to a specific place on the ground. And then there are a number of landfire spatial products that are created from the BPS models and descriptions, including all of the fire regime layers. Okay. That's my quick PowerPoint. And I'm going to do a quick demo of what review would look like outside of the work session, if you're able to help with that. And then I'll pause and we'll have a chance for questions. So what we're asking folks to do in the review, as I mentioned before, is to open up a Word document. And so here's how that works. Randy, do you mind putting this URL in the chat, please? So we've built a website to support the review process and to try and explain it. So if you come to this website, the primary way to provide review is what we're calling self-guided review. So you can scroll down to review options and click on self-guided review. That brings you to this page. Again, there's a set of brief instructions. But really where you want to get to is this spreadsheet, which allows you to download the description for every single biophysical setting that we're planning to map and model in Alaska. So for example, if I wanted to look at that beach ridge community, I just click on its name here and the description comes up. And you could doubt, so I'll go up to where you can see the name here. Oops, it's a few pages up. So here we are. This is the document for the beach ridge community. You can see at the top, there's again, a set of instructions to get you going. And all you, all we're asking is that you download the description, you turn on track changes and you provide feedback to us. And then you can send that to me. So all of this is explained on the website and you can always contact me if you have questions. I will go ahead and stop sharing now and see if there are any questions. Okay, great. I see Ken that you've joined us. Thanks for being here, Ken. Okay. So I think what we'll do then is jump into the discussion. I have a few questions to ask. And, and we'll see, you know, where that gets us. I think with this size group, it would probably be best if individuals wanted to raise their hand to speak. If nobody's speaking, go ahead and jump in. But if, if the floor kind of gets crowded, why don't we use the raise hand function? And then we'll call on you. And then also, if you're not comfortable speaking up in a large group, I would encourage you to use the chat in previous work sessions. The chat has actually been enormously helpful to me because sometimes it's hard to catch all the ideas on the fly. And I found that people put stuff in the chat that was really, really helpful. Okay. So my first question is just a general one. And it's what are the management issues that you all are dealing with in the boreal forest that you think BPS models might be able to help address? So for example, one of the things that biophysical settings models do is help quantify the natural disturbance regime frequency. We also map each of the states. So if you're managing for particular successional states, we could try to define those in such a way that it's useful for you or aligns with, you know, management goals or criteria. So if anyone's willing, what are the management issues that you're dealing with that might have some relationship to this EPS modeling effort and might be assisted by it?
Oh, come on, is nobody getting this stuff?
You got asked this question last time, Beth.
And it kind of put me on the spot, but there's a lot of people on this call that have a lot more of a handle on management issues than I might. But I would, first thing that comes to mind is fire and fire management and you know, as far as resource extraction, what, you know, is happening is probably, you know, smaller, well, big footprints, but you know, mines and mining, some, some forest harvesting. Come on, you guys. What else do you think?
I'm not a manager, but I would add thermal cars potential to list of things that would be interesting to tease out of the map.
Right. I see Lisa's hand up.
I'm having trouble finding my buttons compared to the team setting. Yeah, I think some of the things from the fire management standpoint that we are looking at is, you know, placement of fuels treatments, you know, appropriate placements for that. One of the things that there is some concern about is as fires maybe are not acting as older burns or more recent burns are not acting as fuel breaks like maybe they once did, you know, those shrubby areas. There's been more reports of things burning. And one thing which I'm not sure if the BPS miles before picked this up, but there's been quite a bit of work done recently on both ecological effects and other effects of short interval re-burns. So I think things in the past, the BPS settings have gone kind of, you know, chronologically, but haven't incorporated if something, say, re-burns within 30 years. And there's been some more recent research on that.
Yeah. And Lisa, do you think that re-burn is a new and recent phenomena? Or do you think those kinds of re-burns happened historically, pre-colonization?
I suspect they happened before. We don't know if they're happening more. Jennifer might be able to address that a little more directly because they did some analysis of that sort of thing. It's hard to tell because you only have fire records going back so far.
Right. Okay, I see Eric's hand up.
Yeah, Lisa hit on the re-burn issue. That's always something that we're thinking about. But also, and related to that is a type conversion, that this idea that the landscape is going from domination by conifers to deciduous forests. And then lichen habitat. So how are we going to manage for lichens, caribou forage and that sort of thing in the future?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, those are some, some really interesting issues. And I think some of these things we can get out in the models. I'm not sure now how well we've addressed this re-burn issue. So that's something that I would definitely like to take a look at. And then in general, this idea of type conversion is really important because what we're trying to map with biophysical settings is, you know, what the site would have supported, pre-colonization. And then the existing veg map might show the conversion. And so defining those sites and how we map them, I think is really important. And that's part of the role that the biophysical settings map can play. But, but the description first, the biophysical setting description has to define that well first. And then usually the mappers use that information then to map. So Jennifer, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. So are, are you thinking that within the biophysical settings, you would actually have either showing shortened fire return intervals as a probability of, of occurring? And then what would happen after that? And likewise, if you had more, I guess, you know, higher severity fires or just with climate change, that maybe some of these models that we came up with based on data from, you know, 20 years ago are not reflecting what's actually happening? Is that the type of input you're looking for?
So we, we have to be careful with the biophysical setting. We're trying to get at that pre-colonization fire regime. So kind of a quote unquote, natural fire regime. Distinguish that from maybe more modern fires that might be occurring more frequently or at different severities than they would have in the past. So the idea is that the landfire BPS models can provide a baseline against which we can measure change. So that's why I was wondering with the re-burns, if we were talking about a new, modern phenomena? Or if this is something that has been happening and is part of the natural disturbance regime?
Yeah. And my, like Lisa said, the data sets that we have basically, you know, go back to 1940. So it's hard to, hard to look to see how much has occurred. But there's definitely evidence that it was occurring, you know, in the 40s and 50s. And a lot of our fire regime was, has not been completely modified, you know, due to suppression activities and things like that down in the lower 48. So I think that it has occurred, it probably occurs more frequently now. But I think, I'm sure it occurred in the past. There's, there's stands that I see that are clearly probably had short fire return intervals that went through it to convert it to, to what it is now.
Yeah. Okay. And, you know, I'm hearing, and this is always, always a problem. Wherever we model, you know, the information is imperfect. And that's one of the important things about having the description document that accompanies the model so we can get into some of these complexities and nuances. You don't just have, you know, one fire return interval in the model. We can have a discussion about, that puts that in context. Lisa, is your hand still up? Do you have some?
No, I, I put it back down. I'm sorry. I realize I had it up, but I do have a question, more manager thing. You know, so as more managers are thinking that, you know, maybe managing for historic conditions are not what we should be doing under climate change? How are the biophysical settings, which you're looking at this departure from historic conditions, taking that into account and the relevancy of that and current situations and climate change?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a great question. Historical, you know, that historical baseline won't be relevant everywhere. But what it is, is it's consistent across the nation and can help us measure change over time. So while that might not be relevant for every management situation, it's, it's, I think, relevant in some situations. And if it's not relevant, you could always change it. Like one thing that we try to help people do when they use the models is if the historical baseline is not of interest, the model can very easily be changed to represent, say, a desired future condition. And in that way, it's more useful for management. So the models as is will provide that consistent and comparable baseline across the country. But there's no reason why you can't change and adapt them for your own purposes. And we routinely try to help people do that. If, so if it's of interest to you, we could work on that together.
Also, I'll add that, you know, it'd be great if we were more consistent and documented those challenges in the BPS documents for people, you know? We do have a space for that. There's a comment section. So I think that's one way we might capture issues where we think that historical may or may not be as relevant moving forward. So we can document those sorts of things in the Word documents.
That's a good point. Beth?
Um, I, yeah, I think that's really important. And Lisa said it a lot, much better than I would have put it together. But that's our challenge here is like wherever else in the, in the lower 48, you're trying to imagine what it was like before European colonization. Well, in Alaska, we don't really know. I mean, there weren't that many people here when you want to go back to those same years. And then just how much it's changed now. And it's not a direct change due to, direct change to, you know, man on the landscape. But it is, you know, climate change is definitely affecting us here. And so trying to figure out what was back then. And yeah, like we can't really manage for, for back then because those are not the conditions that we have going forward for sure. And that's a big challenge here as we try to think through these things.
Right. That's certainly a question that I've wrestled with. What is the reference period for Alaska? And I'd be interested to hear thoughts on that. So when we worked in the east, you know, the time period before colonization was different than the period in the west. And that is also different than Hawaii. So we have adjusted that reference time period as we've moved. But the idea is that we're trying to understand successional dynamics and disturbance regimes. Sort of like the quote unquote, natural disturbance regime, although we do include in that Native American burning, for example. But really, it's the prior to European colonization. So I know that that time period in Alaska is more recent than anywhere else, I think, in the country. And so I would anticipate that more recent data are still valuable for defining these biophysical settings in Alaska. But I'm open to thoughts on that. So let's have Ken next and then Lisa.
I was going to say that in the, the field sampling that I've done, where for BLM, we're, we're integrating biomass and forest inventory characteristics, we basically have never found a tree over 100 years old. Okay. And, and part of this is that in the riverine areas, I've got lots of ecological succession questions. But, but the fact is along the Yukon, the Tannanaw, the Cuscoquim, the steamboat traffic basically caused the harvesting of all this timber that was of a size that could be used to fuel the steamboat such that, you know, it's not fire in those areas. It's the human disturbance. And so when I go out and I see a paper birch stand with decadent white spruce falling over in it. But then I also come across other young paper birch stands where the white spruce is coming up in the understory or a balsam poplar stand where the white spruce is coming up in the understory of the black spruce. I start to question myself, what are the successional patterns out there in these riverine areas where, where it's still relatively? out there in these riverine areas where where it's still relatively young, I'd say less than 100 years old? With with respect to how the vegetation is changing. You know, it's enough to try and figure out how to map it right now, let alone try and model it to figure out what the heck has gone on in the past. I don't, I think you'd have to try and research Native American tales and and stories and talk to those people to find out what was there 100 years ago. You know, before colonization, you had a much different population of vegetation, probably along the major waterways.
Right. Yeah, that's super interesting. Lisa?
If someone has something that's more directly related to Ken's comment, they should probably go first.
Okay.
And yeah, can we see that with mining? Jennifer had a comment around Fairbanks. I mean, there's old pictures where the hills are just annuded for the steamboat and for mining.
I don't see any hands, Lisa, so go ahead.
One of the things I was going to say, talking about that kind of type conversion question. Kenei Peninsula is an example that people like to use where bug kill and and fire have led to more grassy areas. And one thing that the ecologists there, Dawn Magnus, has shown is that they have climate envelope models that really show that that area is on the verge of kind of an open grassland and boreal forest. And so it's not really a surprise that these disturbance and changing temperatures are making that comeback as a grasslands. And I don't know what the availability of those are for other areas and, you know, to find similar situations where that might happen and incorporate them into the descriptions.
Yeah. Yeah. So I mean, it's, it's just super challenging. And we, I guess our approach has been to do the best we can BPS by BPS and to use that description document to document the uncertainties and the limitations of the models. Let me transition now to a question about fire frequency. So I'll share my screen again. And I sorted out what I think are some of the largest biophysical settings by area in the boreal eco-region. So this is maybe the the top 11. This was based on an old landfire map. So I think hopefully it's in the ballpark, but it's probably not exactly the most widespread biophysical settings. Actually, you know what? I take that back. I did this a couple of different ways. I think I just took the most frequent. So this is, these are the 11 or 12 biophysical settings with the most frequent fire return interval. Because I figured the more frequent the fire return interval, probably the more we know about it. And so my question here is about, you know, what is the relative fire frequency of these ecosystems? And you can see what we've estimated so far in column C, the name of the system in column B. And, you know, does this jive with your understanding? Or are you seeing any red flags here in terms of how frequently we've modeled fire in these boreal forests so far? I'll also note, as you look at this, and then I'll stop talking and give you some time to think about it, that I use these colors to highlight similar systems. So the black spruce types are in green. I put the riparian and floodplain systems in this pink color and so on. So take a minute and take a look at the fire return intervals and and tell me if you agree, or if you think we've missed the mark on some of these. And Randy, I'm hoping you can monitor for hands, because when I'm sharing my screen, it's hard for me to see everybody.
Jennifer? Hi.
Hi, trying to manage hands. Well, I, my initial response is I am very surprised to see the dry aspen step bluffs and dry aspen step bluffs as being up there in the high fire return interval.
Yeah.
And you know, I would probably tend to put the the black spruce types, and even the bogs, you know, spruce, dwarf tree, peatlands, all the black spruce, probably up there higher. Again, it always, as we talked about in the thunder one, I wasn't on the other one, you know, it really depends on where these are mapped. But I think most of those are going to be probably more frequent than the aspen step bluff.
Yep.
And so, yeah, I think.
Okay, great.
I think those need, I mean, I could get other people's thoughts. My experience with the aspen step bluff is is mainly in along the Yukon River. So I know there's lots more places that that occurs, and I might just never see it burning. I mean, I do see it burning, but I don't see it as like a high flammability place that you're going to have frequent fires.
Right. And in fact, maybe some of the highest frequency in the boreal forest. So that's important.
Anyone else?
This is Blaine Stallman. I, I never know with that stuff. I think of escarpments a lot of times when I think of dry aspen step bluff. And I see it eroded a lot. That's what escarpments do. And I don't know if that's because of a fire happened that maybe caused it to have a devastating avalanche. This is along the Yukon River also that I've seen it. Or whether that's just I have observed it burning before. I can't say specific numbers on it. It would be hard because it's hard to age. I've always had a hard time aging the trees in there.
Okay. Thanks, Blaine.
I think, I think you're right. I mean, there is so much erosion that occurs on those those steep bluff areas that it's probably that. And I do think that fires come into those areas. You know, but that's probably not their their driving factor.
Hi, Lisa. See, I have your hand up.
Yeah, just like those guys, it's mostly along the rivers. And then some of them have been in kind of sandy places, you know, maybe not steep bluffs, but on bluffs or you know, there hasn't been a lot of vegetation sometimes in between the trees. So the continuity of the fuels maybe keeps it from burning as much in some situations. Or the lack of continuity.
Yeah.
That is super interesting. It makes me wonder how often those systems, the lower ones, of course, flood, and you know how much they have like a scraping flood come through that that leaves that sandy condition. I'm also curious, it makes me want to look at the different succession classes. One thing that's always confusing to me is that that mean fire returnable is a composite of our three different severities, low, medium, and high. And it's looking across all the succession classes within that biophysical setting. So it's, it's always, you're making me want to look into that and see where we modeled the fires occurring. Are there particular succession classes that we have modeled as having, you know, more frequent fire? I was curious too, is how long do your aspens typically live in these areas? I know in the Great Lakes, it's kind of debatable where I live, but that, you know, definitely longer than 70 years on average, if left alone. But I'm curious as to what you guys see up there. And Ken, I noticed your hand is up as well.
Yeah, I can, I'm not certain I can address your aspen question, except that, again, I've sampled stands where half the aspen are over on their sides, because they've gotten big enough that they, you know, die and start to fall over. I was going to comment on the the third one from the bottom, the riparian stringer forest in Trebling.
Yeah.
To me, this is typically one of the areas, and we've been doing a lot of mapping just these last couple of years. And and typically dealing with completely different spectral signatures in burned areas as opposed to unburned areas. And the riparian stringers are typically the area of the fire perimeters that is not burned. Okay, that's the area that's typically moisture retains its moisture. And so we see a lot of areas where those are contained within the fire perimeter that's been mapped in the fire history maps. But but typically, the white spruce, the shrubs, there's like a very narrow area in that, that sort of stringer that is virtually untouched. The fires will burn down to it, but they, they a lot of times leave the stringer by itself. And if you look at the imagery, you can see this. So my question sort of dealt back to how were the mean fire return values or intervals determined? Are they from the presence of those types in fire perimeters? Or is it actually from field sites that were put into these types which showed evidence of fire?
We'd have to go back to the specific model, but it's usually a combination of whatever literature we have and expert opinion.
Okay.
And on some of these types, the literature is not very deep.
Okay, so so my experience is I concur with the black spruce being a lot of the burned areas. You know, that we've experienced. But but again, my comment on the wetter areas typically down close to the rivers on the flats, they tend to suffer more from flood disturbance and deposition of news, new, you know, silt and so forth, than they do fire. So that's my experience.
Yeah. Oh, I was just going to say that we do model, we try to model all disturbances that are important. And so I'm fairly certain that the riparian stringer and that, and certainly the floodplain have flooding included. So so we have, we will capture the flooding. But here I was just asking about the relative fire return interval. But I just want to assure you that that flooding will be included as well.
So I see, I didn't see the order, but Thomas, Beth, and Lisa, I see your hands up. Maybe Thomas, we haven't heard from you in a bit. I don't think.
Yeah, well, I missed the first half of the call. I got, I broke my pole and I was out skiing this morning. Anyway, the dry aspen stuff, I, I don't think it hardly burns at all unless it's like a spring kind of human caused fire. Just not available for most of our lightning fire season. And there's not a lot on the the ground to, to keep fire in there the way that deeper duff layer just allows fire to persist even through the winter and the spruce stands, but definitely through the summer and things just go out in the aspen stands. So it, like in the Canadian forest fire danger rating system, it's just unavailable to burn in the summer.
Okay.
So I think though the trees don't last that long, they're junk trees, like can't use them for firewood, they rot fast. But they're not huge pieces of the landscape that are that cool type. Or that vegetation type. So it's probably just not something we're going to be able to figure out. But fire is not in there that much. And then I think when you're talking about flooding, I think an important thing about the flooding is ice scour.
Yeah.
How to house down by the Tanana. And it's a little different than just flooding. Big chunks of ice tearing stuff up. And so I don't know if that's important or not, but those are my comments.
Yeah, I'll look on these models and see if ice scour is included. I know we've a disturbance in some models. But I'm not sure about these in particular. So I'll try and find that out.
Beth, I see your hand up. Thank you.
Yeah, just another comment on the aspen. And that is, yeah, it usually is dying off from rot or or, you know, we've had a lot of insects and diseases on that. That's probably the biggest disturbance or the cause of aspens to die. And that's happening more and more. So it adds a pretty minor part of the landscape. Really unique when you do get in it. And then the ice scouring too, in those along those big rivers. And that's there, they're finding that that's not happening quite as much as it used to. And so that allows those willows and stuff to get bigger. I was reading through the descriptions before we got on the call. And that's noted there too. So a couple of comments.
Great. Thank you, Beth. I'll make sure, I'll double check that insects and disease are included in those dry aspens and maybe the balance of disturbance towards insects and disease and less fire.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, and I'll, I'll go back and look at that too. And definitely less fire than yeah, than than insects and diseases.
Okay.
I keep calling on people while I'm on mute. Jennifer, I noticed your hand up.
Well, I guess in, you know, while we had this group here, when we, I was involved with these BPSs very early on. And I remember, you know, some of it, we we kind of just threw out numbers there. And I wondered if I guess while you have this group here, do we want to try to order it at least in kind of our our thoughts on it? I mean, yes, some of it needs, if there's data out there to support it, but you know, you have a group here now, or are we going to each work on it on our own?
I think it's a great idea, Jennifer. And I think we should take a first stab at it here. So I see Thomas has his hand up. And maybe while Thomas speaks, I can take a first stab at at moving the the aspen down and the the black spruce up.
Sorry, I think that's a good idea, but I'll take my hand down.
Okay. Just sort of.
And with ordering the list, you mean in terms of fire frequency, not in terms of importance or anything? That you mean fire frequency?
That's what I was thinking. Since so much of this is driven by, you know, a lot of the modeling is, is driven by this fire frequency. Should at least try to start with that. I mean, obviously, there's other disturbances as well that are wrapped into it, but yeah.
Okay, so I'm just taking a really crude stab at things. So I moved all the black spruce types up. And I'm not sure, like, does the fin type? Or maybe we could talk about where, where does white spruce hardwood fit in? There's a few of those white spruce hardwood types.
So sorry, I keep dominating here. There's no straight white spruce. It's all just mixed, it's always mixed with hardwood.
Okay, um, let me go back and look. So I chose what we modeled as the most frequent turn intervals. But I've got a more complete list here. So let me just see if there's a straight. I feel like in the sub-boreal region, there is.
I think as we were doing.
Tree, oh, those are spruce hardwood.
This, I think this is where we came in with the EVPs too, that of these BPSs are mixed, but we want it to not be mixed. But that's, that's all there is. That's.
Well, I think, um, I think usually the way these are modeled are with a hardwood cereal state than proceeding to white spruce in the absence of fire over time. But anyway, I did not, I did not see just a pure white spruce in the boreal types, if I have my list right and I scan it correctly. It's always white spruce hardwood mix.
Also, Lindsay, I know that you have your hand raised. Thank you.
I was just going to say it might be included in that Montaigne floodplain forest in Trebling of your white spruce cereal stage.
And Yeah, probably.
And then I like the way you ordered the, the black spruce types. I think that makes sense in terms of the moisture, a wetness sequence.
Okay. So yeah, I'm kind of uncertain, just going to insert some, I'm a little uncertain about about where white spruce fits in. We also have this tree line white spruce and I did, no, that's not what I gotta comment about.
Think that tree line needs to go below the white spruce, the music.
Yeah, I was gonna say that music is probably the white spruce when you're looking for.
Yeah. So music is burns more frequently than the tree line. And the boreal would be.
One goes down too.
Yep.
Okay. So there's the white spruce group. And does the white spruce group come below the black spruce group?
Yeah, and maybe this is my bad, not, you know, the Montane floodplain forest and treble and boreal. I need to read what that actually means, what that is.
Right.
And if you guys said it's mostly, I mean, if it's.
I was just gonna note, we did get a comment on this um from a fire effects, one of the fire information um system staff reviewed this. And she said that it's in the ballpark of existing, but very sparse literature, but maybe high. Um, there were some fire return intervals documented in the Riley Creek study area that were forty to sixty years of age. And also based on stand ages, um some evidence that stand replacement fires are uncommon.
That Riley Creek isn't floodplain, that study area, but that's.
Okay, I wanna make a fact of that.
Eric, I see your hand is raised and then Lindsay and I may have the order wrong, but.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I just wanna hear what others might have to say about sort of white spruce in general. It seems to me that the uh fire return interval should be longer than what we have there. And sort of the thought process is a lot of times they have to go through a hardwood phase before they get into a you know, an overstory white spruce kind of phase and a hundred and five years seems too short for that. And I'm thinking more like two hundred years, but I don't know where that hundred and five number comes from, but what do others think?
Us thinking about too, this is Tom. Um, usually they all come in like as one cohort after the fire. And the hardwoods are like up there really fast, but then the spruce are way down low and understory on the hardwoods. Diotic kind of forest spruce and uh in the white spruce anyway. So it in order to get to a white spruce and yeah, it might go a hundred years. But it might take like some of that stuff up on Cash Creek where I was doing those work in graduate school of at fifty years, it's just a thick hardwood stand and the spruce trees were maybe like twenty tall in there underneath it.
I would.
Someone wanna jump in?
Well, I would go more in the hundred and fifty. I, the the white spruce that I see in the Yukon Charlie area burned just about as frequently as the black spruce um on the, you know, upland white spruce. And they do have that kind of uh birch. You know, birch cohort, but they're, they seem to burn just as readily as the black spruce.
This is Blaine. I I do agree with the premise of what Eric was saying though, in that I have worked in Yukon Flats, for instance, and in the White Mountains, it seems like it might take longer to actually get a closed stand of white spruce compared to getting a closed stand of black spruce. Like that could be a hundred years longer to actually get a closed stand of white spruce. Eric's premise could be correct. Once it's a closed stand of white spruce, they probably do have the same fire return interval. Like like what was just stated.
So maybe a difference in fire return interval based on the serial stage, is that what you're suggesting, Blaine?
Yeah, I I mean, that's what I thought Eric suggested, but I I kind of, that's what I was.
I I, this is Jennifer, I agree with that, um that, you know, if you have a dominant deciduous forest coming in, you know, as an overstory first, that's gonna slow the likelihood of it burning and probably the ones that were seen standing um or that are burning. I haven't aged them, but I can look at, we've got a whole bunch of stand age stuff, I could look at it.
Okay. Um, okay, it's two minutes to the hour, so I can stay as long as people would like to. But I'm gonna do a quick wrap up for anyone who wants to leave. Um, so I'll I'll stop sharing for just a second while we do that. Um, thanks everyone so much for your time here today. Um, remember, if you want to provide review of any of the description documents, you can do that through the website, or if you need any help getting started, you can contact Randy or myself um directly. So we wanna make this as easy as possible for people to provide feedback. And um I did mention that we have a deadline of the end of February. But if you let me know that you're reviewing something and you, um, you know, could get it to me in April or May, I'll say, that's fantastic. Thank you. So just, nothing's hard and fast. Um, and if you need more time, let me know. Um, so thanks for coming. And um I'll stay on and and we can continue to talk as long as people would like to. Um, I do see Lindsay's hand up.
I was just going to mention, um let's see that, so the Aspen step bluff and the tree line communities. Those are all typically woodland types, right? They're have a um they're more of an open type. And I, I mean, there are lots of fire experts on this call that that might disagree, but uh my feeling would be that they are patchy on the landscape and because of that, their fire, their fire return interval probably depends more on their proximity to plantable types. Um, and also, yeah, I think I can't remember if it was Beth or Lisa that mentioned that, or Lisa, I think she said that they have, you know, poor fuel connectivity. Um, that's definitely, I I I think yeah, that's something to consider with woodland types, uh I'm sorry, tree line types as well.
Yeah, thanks, Lindsay. Since we don't model spatially, that's that type of interaction is not something we capture well in landfire, except we can capture it in the description document. So I'm glad you noted that.
Yeah, and I do think they um in general, all of those should be more towards the bottom of their list.
Okay, more towards the bottom than they are now.
Um, I I mean, I don't think oh, I'm getting out of my area of expertise here. But I almost feel like that mesic birch Aspen would burn more readily than, oh, I don't know. You know, the dry Aspen is, I think, would dry, would burn um easily, but like other people have said, there's not much of it and it's patchy. So actually, I don't know, I don't, but I do think that maybe the tree lines should move down. The tree line white spruce hardwood, woodlands.
Yeah. Below.
I'll I'll default to others on that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Tom, the tree line stuff, one of the reasons it doesn't burn as much is because uh when it's on fire there, it's just more likely to go out at night because it's not sheltered and there isn't that picked up. It's not as sparse as those dry Aspen stands, hardly have any duff layer at all, but yeah, those black spruce stands that wanna burn more, they just, fire doesn't go out at night in them. So I would concur with making the um tree line a longer fire return interval and know people's observations of, they're always telling me that fires are crowning in hardwoods and stuff. And then I walk over there and I see that there's a big patch of spruce behind these hardwoods that they sonics to the road. Really, that's what was burning. Yeah, the proximity thing, it confounds people's observations pretty hard.
Right. Okay, so I'm hearing that that the current fire return interval for the tree line types too frequent, it should be less frequent. But is the relative, but I'm still not sure about the relative order. Um, Thomas, were you also saying that the tree line white spruce types might actually burn less than the dry Aspen or the music birch?
Well, yeah, maybe. Um, definitely the music birch. I I guess I want, if birch can be in there, but there'd be more of a tendency for, I don't see pure birch stands really. But I do see some of these dry Aspen stands that have spruce and hardly anything in there. It's music, it's not as dry. It's got more of an understory. I want that to be more frequent to burn than the dry Aspen in the tree line. The lower number of the interval. Up in, up in this spreadsheet.
Okay, so I think what I heard and maybe someone was concurring. Oh wait, I think I just did something wrong here. Hold on, let me do an undo. Let's go back. Okay. So I think I heard this. Oh, how come we can't taste? Okay, hold on. Let's do a save.
Lisa, I see your hand up. I don't remember if it's been up or just popped up.
No, this one's a new one. I guess I was just wondering, I'm not having worked too much in um the tree line white spruce, but some of that would depend on the understory too, right? Because sometimes it can have quite a bit of shrubs and shrub birch, you know, Jennifer, you may have worked more in those types since you have more hills than refuges usually have mountains.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I see the it depends on where the tree line white spruce in Yukon Charlie definitely can burn, I would say probably they're about equal to what's going on with the dry Aspen. Um, and then, but in places you know, other places, they don't burn as frequently, um or they're not not as likely to to burn, but so it's hard to say, but I don't, that's not a very clear answer.
Um, well, it's complicated.
Well, and it is because it all depends on where it's located. Um, and the fuel, the fuels in it too make a big difference. Um, I'm looking at photos right now of, you know, a dry Aspen step bluff that burned. Um, I do think that birch probably because of its I've probably seen more of those burn than some of these kind of sparse, the Aspen bluff, there just is not a lot of fuels in those. Um, and I think your tree line actually has more fuels to burn than the than the bluff communities. So you're gonna see more mineral soil on these Aspen bluff, but but they're super dry. So you know, if if the fair fire can carry through it, it probably would burn readily. But these tree line spruce communities have, they've got feather mouses in the understory, they've got um shrub birch, they've got a lot of arachnous species that'll burn.
Are you thinking that on average, the the dry Aspen bluff might actually burn less than the tree line?
Uh, maybe, yeah.
Possibly.
Good, a good little paper to write. I don't think anybody's ever really asked me those.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking, just looking at.
So you, do you think the tree line should be above the dry Aspen and?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, if you're gonna lump them, you know, kind of together and they're not separated out in the descriptions. I don't think they are by understory much. I I would say there's a higher tendency for those to burn than the the Aspen bluffs.
The other kind of weird thing about the tree line stuff is a lot of times it'll have snow on it longer, like there's hardly any fires when you start getting up by the tree line in the Brooks rain.
Okay, and a short season because of that fire? Uh, I mean, sorry, because of this short fire season because of the snow on the ground longer.
Yeah, I mean, it's already a short season and then you cut a couple of weeks off of it.
Right, okay, so um it sounds like um all of these numbers should be adjusted so that the fire frequency is lower than it or um less frequent, fire is less frequent than we currently have estimated here.
I also think that Montane floodplain should probably be not the bottom of the barrel.
Okay.
But I don't know, I have to read through the description more to find out what it really is.
Okay. Does anyone else have thoughts on where the floodplain might go? Let me just see if I can bring it up.
If it's all, you know, alder and willow and horsetail, I just saw that in there that that.
Some poplar, white spruce, alder, willow, horsetail, yes.
Who, somebody was talking about, was that? Who was talking about the stringers seeing, you know, the unburned inclusions in the stringers? Because that's, that is really true, that does happen in these burned areas, you see these fires go through and then you see these kind of wet riparian stringers. And I guess the difference between these and how they're mapped, I guess it's the question.
Right, you, do you mean the stringer versus the floodplain?
Yeah.
Right.
Um, or you could you go back to that description?
Yeah.
Something caught my eye there. Um, yeah, that chart a fire frequency caught my eye. You can kind of get a feel for how that that return interval is calculated. It's almost like an addition or something like it's not the whole firefight return was not in average so much, it's kind of weird, but um, just knowing how how long the modeler said went, you know, five thousand years between replacement fires, so super rare.
Well, I know, um, you know, this is, um, these are old studies, so is there anything new that we could add? And then even these are showing um much less frequent fire. You know, those are all kind of two hundred to three hundred years. Well, no, I guess, I guess we modeled three hundred, so I guess it's not that far off. It's in the ballpark of of that information, but um perhaps there's new information that would add to this. Um, okay, so still um some, some uncertainty about where these go in the in the relative order. Does anyone disagree with this relative order? Or have something that they're questioning?
I think it looks pretty good. I don't know what the numbers would be, but the order makes sense to me.
Okay. Um, what about um the actual fire frequency of the music wet black spruce forest? We modeled it at seventy-two years. I feel like we should, if if there's one system that we could get a good fire return interval on, in Alaska, it feels like this might be the one. Does that seem like a reasonable estimate that aligns with the literature?
Fifty to four hundred?
Fif- like the range?
Yeah, but I don't know, one of these ecologists might like a better feel for it. Yeah, but I don't know, one of these ecologists might like a better feel for what the mean would be.
I don't know, I tend to use seventy to a hundred.
And where does that four hundred come from?
Yes. Actually, probably a hundred and fifty.
Those are really nice big black spruce stands of the lichen and, and that avoided fire for whatever reason. Then eventually they burn. I'm a mirror old.
Yeah, I usually, I think the seventy to one fifty, I mean, I've seen some older ones, I guess. But for a general range, and I think usually they consider in some of the other studies, looking at lichens and caribou, um, you know, like eighty degrees and up where you start getting some decent lichen regeneration under it. I think in, uh, there was one study in the Elche, and if it hasn't burned up already, where they did find like a three hundred or four hundred year old stand. But I think those are getting rarer and not as easy to find.
Yeah.
This is a mean fire return interval, not the extremes, right?
So, so, um, our goal in the model is to get our best estimate of the mean across, um, the range of this type. And then in the description document, I like to also include the range and provide more information because the mean doesn't tell the whole story.
Well, it seems like those other numbers, one hundred, one thirty-seven, one forty-eight. There may be, uh, better than the seventy-two looks like it should maybe be a hundred or a hundred and ten or. You're looking for the average, like a four hundred year old stuff is pretty rare. Fifty happens, but it's not.
What about the Copper River Basin? Some of those stands are probably pretty old.
So, um, sorry, I didn't, who was talking? There was a suggestion, um, was someone just asking that for these types, the dwarf tree peatland and the tamarack? And that those might be, the frequency might be closer to a hundred years?
No, I, I think those three numbers look, uh, more appropriate to me. And that seventy-two looks like it's too large, it's fucked up, but.
Yeah.
I would defer, you know, like Eric, Jennifer.
It sounds like, um, this, this estimate is on the low, the low end, uh, or the, the most frequent side of the estimates. So I guess what I'm hearing is perhaps it could be bumped up a little bit. But try and keep it maybe in the seventy to one fifty range and also that, you know, you can find older stands, perhaps three hundred to four hundred years old.
Yeah, Eric, here, if, if I had to pick a number, I would have said about one twenty.
Um, and then the, the tussock woodland would, would need to get bumped up accordingly, I'm assuming. Or do you think black spruce tussock woodland is burning, uh, about the same as the wet black spruce? Excuse me, music wet.
I really don't have a basis to, to say, I guess. I'd think they'd be about the same.
They're about the same. We have a lot of that in Denali that I've looked at. Um, they seem to have about pretty similar. It's funny, I'm looking at actually tree ages of the, we have like five thousand tree ages for different parks. And I'm looking at it for the ages. You were asking about Wrangles, age of black spruce average is a hundred and twenty-two years. Max age two hundred and fifty-six. Um, and that, and that's kind of assuming that stand replacement, this is in unburned forest types. See what it shows for Denali. Max age two hundred and twenty. And nineteen. Average eighty-seven, eighty-eight.
Okay. So that's, uh, it sounds like it kind of aligns with these estimates. Showing variability across the landscape.
Yeah, I, I would think they're similar. We had a lot of that in community and, you know, once you start getting some of the dead grass stuff on the tussocks back, um, post fire can carry a fire pretty good. So. I, I'm looking through the Cronin, um, or actually that big paper that they did, um, trying to find what they've been saying. But. I'm not coming up with, yeah, they have lots of examples of studies that Olson and all report from all the, the, the tree pores that they top. I'm, I'm assuming you guys have that.
I don't, I don't know offhand, so if you could just send it.
Okay.
I'll know I have it, if you don't mind, Lisa.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good reference.
Okay. I will send out a follow-up email summarizing the discussion today. I'll also take a look at the chat because I know that people put some information in there. And in my email, I'll send out our first approximation of the order of the relative fire frequency. So I think that's a big outcome from our work today. And, um, then you can have a chance to respond to that, um, if you have additional thoughts that you want to add. And, um, if you get into the descriptions and, and decide that, you know, you've got feedback on that, um, you can provide that as well.